Okay, good morning. Today is Monday, September 20th. This is a special meeting for the Persian, special workshop for the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Call this meeting to order. First item is public input. Public comment and discussion or action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Any public comments on Zoom? No public comments. Okay, the first part of this workshop is a workshop with the Emergency Services Committee to discuss reports submitted and its outcomes. Future meeting updates or dates will be discussed at the end. Sean, you're on. Rodney, you're on.
Yeah, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I'm here. I'm in Elko.
And then, and then I heard Marty also.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So I guess we want to start off a little bit about where we left off. We were talking about ambulance fees in different counties and you've come up with some numbers.
I promised that I would contact other counties and find out what they do. So I have a comparison sheet. It's in the front of the binder. We were going to put it up on the screen, but unfortunately it's so small and then it's distorted because it just doesn't do it right. But I contacted Churchill, Humboldt, Lander, North Lyon County, which is Fernley area, Mineral, and of course us, and then White Pine. So Churchill, Humboldt, and Lander, they're all hospital-based. And they are funded, you know, by the hospitals and the ambulance runs. So even though I put information, you know, on what they charge for their ambulance fees in the comparison, you know, I just got information from them. They have paid staff that does everything. And their billing is in-house basically. In Lander, I believe, Sean, I'm not sure if this is correct, but I think Sean said he was going to look for a billing company for Lander. But in North Lyon County, which is Fernley, what I found interesting about that one is that they are a district, a fire district, but they, their building is actually located in Fernley. And they have an agreement with the city. And I don't know which came first because I didn't take time, I didn't have the opportunity yet to look up to see whether the fire district was formed before the city was incorporated. You know, if that would have made a difference. But for some reason, they are able to have the firehouse and that firehouse has been there forever in Fernley. We lived there, gosh, 30 years ago and the firehouse was there, not as big as it is now, but it was there. So I have a feeling that, but I don't know when the district was formed. So they're funded by their tax base and because they get a special rate, you know, on, because they are a district. And then the ambulance generated revenue. They are self-sufficient with a very tight budget. And I have their rates down there and then I also have, you know, their shifts and different information. Mineral County is under the county. They are not a district. They are funded through ambulance fees and there is a portion that comes from the county general fund to support them. And I wasn't quite sure if I, well, excuse me. Their ambulance fee is the lowest in the state, but they are asking for an increase. It's $650 a run. And they do about 400 ambulance runs per year and 25 to 30 fire calls per year. They're very similar to us as far as the number of runs and fire calls. I spoke to one of the captains because the chief wasn't available when I called. But they're paid from the ambulance fees and then there is a portion, like I said, that comes from the general fund. They also do have a stipend for their drivers and their EMTs. And then a regular EMT receives $30 a run. An advanced EMT gets 40. And they do have transportation outside of the county, you know, like to another hospital or something. And drivers, they're very similar to what we do. Then, well, Pershing, we're all aware of what we do. We are funded through the billing and also the general fund. And then White Pine is their billing service, both, both Mineral, Pershing, and White Pine use Sharp. Mineral and White Pine could not speak highly enough of Sharp and its, and its services. Because they're getting their billing in and doing whatever needs to be done. They are, they are getting their money and that's where we're having our problem, as everybody recognizes. And White Pine volunteers do not receive any stipend day. And Brett North is fairly new at being the fire chief and the EMS emergency manager. So he just had some information together for me. I asked each county for position descriptions. And in the back of the binder are what position descriptions I received. They include not just EMTs, but fire services as well. So everything is in there. And I also included the contact information. So if we have any further questions, we can easily get ahold of people. So that was what I did and everybody was really gracious about sharing information. So Justin, if you could put the PowerPoint up when you have a moment. So I did a PowerPoint with just some thoughts, okay? And that's all it is. It's just thoughts. So this, to open up a discussion on our part and we'll let Justin get that. So if you go to the first one, Justin, the next one. So, you can't read that too. Sorry. I didn't print that off, but I can. I was doing a lot of printing. Okay, so the first line, it says, what we could do, the first thing is we could do nothing at all. If we do nothing at all, the ambulance services will eventually fail. There's no question about that. The next thing, I don't know if I can get mine bigger. The next one is we need to increase our ambulance revenue and we can do that several ways. We can raise ambulance fees and we can improve the billing recovery. We can look at other revenue sources like grants, sales tax, special assessments, and city allocation. Right now, the city does provide some 35% to help towards that, but we could ask the city for more. So those were just some of the thoughts. The most important one right now is we need to improve our billing recovery. And to do that, we need to train, I think, have some training for our volunteers on the completion of the paperwork. We also need to, I think, look at maybe a stipend for the EMS responders and the ambulance drivers that they would, and I'm talking about a small stipend. I mean, we can't afford anything big. But when they complete their paperwork, then they get the stipend. And that was just a thought. We need to renew the Medicare and Medicaid agreements because those have expired. So the billing company isn't able to bill those services like it should. Another, the third one is we could separate the ambulance service from the fire. And that would require the Love Lock Fire Department to change its bylaws, which you could do. And then we could look at the people that really want to do the ambulance service. And there are a lot of dedicated individuals who would continue to do that, that they would, you know, be able to do that. And there wouldn't be necessarily so much of a training. The training, you know, for EMTs is one thing, but when you have to do the fire as well, you know, and people could do both. That would be their choice. But if those wanted to, if people just wanted to do ambulance, they could do that. We could look at hiring, the fourth one is we could look at hiring the EMS manager coordinator. This is what was recommended by the subcommittee. That person would report directly to the Board of Commissioners. They would provide monthly reports in person to the commission. They would need to work daily with a county auditor, keeping that person informed of billing. There would have to be some tight items on that so that we know that the work is being done. The other is the county could create EMS and fire district itself. We could apply for the Safer Grant for fire and EMS positions. And then we could determine the organizational flow chart. So that's just so that we can open up some discussion. And so that's what I've been working on. And, you know, in your binder, like you said, you have the subcommittee's reports. I did a chart of if we looked at hiring an EMS coordinator, I did some comparisons on the costs. That's in tab two in your binder. And then I also looked at if we wanted to do an incentive. So for instance, if the individual collected more than $100,000 in the billing, and I'm not talking about billed out, I'm talking actual revenue received, that we could look at giving them a, like a bonus, like a 5% bonus of the amount or something like that. And I put that in there. Because the more they collect, the better the, the department will run, everything will be smooth. But again, that's just thoughts and, you know, and I need to hear from you guys what, what you want to do.
I'd like to do it all.
Okay. And then, oh, I also put in there like information on the sales tax rates. So we can look at our sales tax rates because we can increase that to help fund, you know, help the general fund and help fund things. The other thing too is I looked up the options, the tax, property tax options and voter assessments. The hospital voter assessment is supposed to be outside. And Lacey, you'll have to help me with that because I didn't have time to ask you about it. But voter assessments are outside of the cap. And yet the hospital rate is a voter assessment. Yeah, and I'm not, I've looked at the, I, I looked at that, what the state has online. And that's what I found. Now, I'm not saying that I don't need to research it more, but I, and I didn't, there wasn't time to do it. But it looks to me that like that's a possibility. The other thing that we can do is we can, we always are putting in a lot of money for the senior center. We can go to the voters and ask them for an assessment on the senior center. You know, I'm not talking a lot of money, but anything that we can get that will help the general fund for what we need to do. So, you know, again, those are, those are things.
We can't create a fire district because we have a tax cap, right?
The general district would have to go to the voters. And that's where we don't have much of a wiggle room on the tax cap. But again, if we find out that the hospital's not in that cap, that gives us a little bit of wiggle room. But we'd have to look at that. But the county can create its own district that is under the county commissioners. And we could do an organization.
All of our departments or just Love Lock?
It would include all of them. But Bryce can explain that a little bit better. It was in the report too. Do you want to explain that, Bryce?
So if the, if the commissioners want to create a fire district, it can't, it cannot include and incorporate the city. So it would have to be just the unincorporated cities. So Grass Valley, Airway, Wright Beach. It would not include Love Lock. So the problem with that is that you're not going to get Love Lock's tax base and we're at our tax cap anyway.
We're close to it.
Yeah, we're close to it. So it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't raise enough money to support itself.
But.
You say you love lock, you can. Love Lock is really what our biggest issue.
Yeah.
Carol, I want to look at that. I, it hasn't ever been on the ballot since I've been here. And as far as I remember, the city gave up tax rate to the hospital.
Yeah.
I, I don't have the.
And, and, you know, yeah. I have to find. But then how is North Lyon County having theirs in the city of Fernley? And they have an agreement with the city of Fernley. I mean, that's something we need to find out.
They've probably started because the city of Fernley wasn't incorporated until maybe 15 years ago.
Yeah, not even then. Yeah, that or they have a district that does not include the city of Fernley.
But it does.
By contract, by contract, they just put a building there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just because the firehouse is there.
Right. Doesn't mean the district's there. It's just a taxing entity. You just can't have an incorporated city within your taxing entity. It doesn't say you can't have equipment and and operate personnel in unincorporated, excuse me, incorporated city. I'm sure that's how they do it.
But.
So there's a district outside of Fernley. And then by contract, between the district and the city of Fernley, the district put a building in Fernley.
But we could do that too.
Sure.
Ted, you have a question?
How much, based on today, how much money are we talking about needing to raise? I mean, we're talking about all these different things, but if you don't know how much revenue you need, how do you figure out what you need? So do we have a number as to how much revenue needs to be raised in order to perpetuate this program?
Depends on how many people we need or can bring in. Just, I mean, this sheet wasn't up on there, but just for an EMS coordinator, manager coordinator. I mean, there's different pay levels.
I'm just looking at, you know, I have a bottom line to date realizing that that's based on inflation and other things. That will increase yearly. So therefore you're going to have to have something that would allow that also to be incorporated in it.
Humboldt County did it, did something similar for McDermott. And I believe that it was around $800,000 a year.
And see, a coordinator, if we just hired a coordinator to get the billing and make sure that things are done, the training's done, there would be more to it than just being, you know, the billing. I, we'd have to look at job descriptions.
Somebody has a question, Justin?
My hire in Kansas.
Yeah, but if we had a base salary of $40,000 for that person to start, with benefits and everything, you're looking at almost $76,000. And then the revenue that's been coming in has only been about $90,000 or $100,000. So most of the revenue from the ambulance collections would go towards coordinator. And, and then the only thing that you would hope that hiring a person to do that would increase your billing because it used to be that with REMZA, we collected up to $165,000. So, you know, we could do better.
It's a main hour, a day job.
We have a part-time personnel that receives a stipend that it's, it's, and nothing against the individual, please, that it's, they don't have the time to follow up on the billing and everything, the way it needs to be. And also our Medicare and Medicaid agreements have expired for whatever reason. But those are things that we need somebody to keep.
And I presume the coordinator, but also not be the billing person.
No, they, we use Sharp and Sharp does an excellent job.
Yeah, because that's what you're wanting to do.
Yeah, no, no. There's no problem with Sharp. The problem is just getting the proper paperwork to them and in a timely manner. And, you know, and you guys can speak more to that than I can.
Yeah.
This is Rod, wanted to add something to that. The problem isn't with all the paperwork going in. It's the problem is the Medicaid, Medicare not being billed for the last couple of years. That's where the problem's at. It's not what the purpose, not getting the paperwork. The paperwork's going in, they just can't bill for it. If that stuff was going in, they would be collecting the money. And the reason, and we're still at this point, nobody's done anything to get the Medicaid stuff in yet. We were told to hold off until after this meeting, but that's something that has to be addressed right away. And if we don't address that, we, we just had from the 5th of September till right now, we did over 20 ambulance calls and two fire calls. And if any of those were Medicaid, Medicaid, we're not going to get any money out of them. We had two Reno runs that we were not, we had two Reno runs that we were not able to have, that we were not able to take those patients into Reno because we could not get a second person to go on that call. So this is where we're at now. I just want to let you know where we're, how we stand on this of, how critical it is that we need to start making some decisions on what direction we're going to go and what we're going to do for this.
So Rodney. Rodney, and Lacey's office helped with that and then it's expired. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that the Medicare and Medicaid is agreements are.
That is the county's responsibility because it is the Persian County's ambulance. And they were notified about that and nothing happened.
And to add to what Rodney's saying about the Medicare Medicaid billing.
Got 2019 application. It's the first one I had ever seen and I did not receive notification that we had expired.
Yes.
So this is Marty to add to that for the Medicare Medicaid billing. We, I mean, this, we sat down Rodney and Patty, or Rodney and Debbie and I to see what had to be done. And we don't even know the people's names that are on the login information. So it's never been anybody on Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department for the last 15 plus years to do the Medicare Medicaid. Because I don't know who any of them are.
Yeah.
But, I mean, here we are pointing our fingers. We all need to quit pointing our fingers and we just need to get to the bottom of it. And we need to get the Medicaid thing turned in so we can get our payment.
Um, Lacey's made some comments and she's got by a microphone, but.
Here, I will give her mine.
Yeah, let Lacey speak here. Oh, Lacey, move over a little bit closer.
I helped REMZA in 2019 because it needed to be renewed. Before that, the county had never had anything to do with it. The fire department did it. I never received any notification that it expired. Otherwise, I would have followed up, even though it's not my job.
Neither has the fire department and they have your guys' mailing address. They don't even have our mailing address on Medicaid. It had nothing to do.
Okay, so, okay, so at this point, at this point, nobody's taking responsibility for it. So we have to make a determination of who's responsible and we do need to get it done. And so, you know, past is past. We have to look at the future. So what we're going to do is look at the future. And what this commission needs to do right now is we're not going to be able to implement everything that the subcommittee requested or that the fire department is asking. There's not enough money, you know, to hire a whole team of EMTs and everything else. We need to look at whether or not we, in my opinion, we need to look at whether or not we want to hire a person full-time to bring them in, to make sure that everything is done. And Marty, what you're telling me is that you're not really having a problem with getting the billing information in?
Sorry, I'm at work. Um, no, I'm getting the information, the work that, the information that we're getting is from the hospital. So everything in the, the signatures, I mean, Sharp just made us aware of it like six to maybe a year ago. So we are doing that for all Medicare Medicaid patients. So that's not a problem. On traumas and stuff like that, we have to go follow the patient and get the signatures. So yes, part of that is the issue, but I mean, it's not the whole issue. But I totally agree with you. We need to hire someone that has the time to sit there and go chase everybody around and to sit down and do the Medicare Medicaid credentialing for Pershing, Pershing County.
And then also that person could also be an EMT. And then we could use volunteers at least to start with, volunteers to supplement. And maybe look, depending on the revenue, at a small stipend. Maybe if, you know, not to start with, but as the revenue started coming in to help them out. We do pay for transport out of county. But if it would help with response on EMTs, you know, even if we looked at $20 or something a run, I mean, anything to start with, once that we have the revenue. But those are just thoughts out there.
And well, I'm open to, I would like to see the ambulance revenue cover the position and the stipends for the, the EMTs.
Yeah, and right now it would, just barely, depending on what rate of pay you brought the person in. If you brought them in at 40,000, and I'm just pulling a number, that would cost 75,000 to start. We wouldn't necessarily start paying EMTs right away a stipend, but it's something we could look at. But we, it would just barely cover.
Then my question is, is how do we fund new ambulances and everything else?
We're not going to be able to buy a new ambulance because the revenue's not there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. That's where we're talking about. It'd be nice if, if this new, bought fund would buy an ambulance, but we're not there yet.
Right, no. And I don't know that it can, seriously.
In my point of view, the county needs to hire a full-time person that can make sure that the billing gets done, the Medicaid issues are handled is there for ambulance calls.
First, and to coordinate.
Yeah, and then as the revenue increases, then we can pay stipends to the EMTs.
And I agree with that.
That's my position on all this.
Rain, how, where are we at money-wise? How can we do it?
There's been a little bit more revenue coming in like in the ambulance. But I, you know, I didn't look at that this morning to see what the end income balance was. Last year, we fell short of what we projected as far as the budget. I think we received 97,000 and we had like 125,000. So we're not flush by any means in the ambulance.
But there was some that came in towards the beginning of this fiscal year.
Yeah, it's definitely coming in, you know, on a weekly basis. Sometimes only like $300, sometimes a couple hundred. But I do notice that it seems to be more frequent than last year. So far.
Yeah. You know, it was mentioned that, and in fact, a couple of the counties said that Sharp was doing a good job. One county said no.
No, actually, the, both of those counties were very pleased. Mineral and White Pine. Mineral and White Pine. Were the only one that is having issues with Sharp. And I don't think it's Sharp. And and again, Marty, I'm not pushing, I'm not pointing fingers at you or Lacy or anybody else. I and and this is personalities all aside, we just need to come to a solution. Everybody's doing the best job they can. I know that. And, um, you know, it's hard to expect somebody that is working full-time to do everything else too and have a family and and all of that. So please don't take offense to anything I'm saying or try not to anyway.
Well, we we have to do something.
Yes.
And I think that hiring in the coordinator, hiring full-time position um, is the first step.
To definitely a good first step.
As long as the revenue the ambulance brings in meets the salary.
And it has been so far. Um, and it it should only get better and whoever is hired, um, that's their job depends upon that.
Correct.
I mean, it's very simple. And, um, you know, we can hire them at a base salary to start and and look at incentives or whatever, but um, you know, right now, that's about all we can afford is a base salary. And then the other thing is we need to come up with a position description. And that may not be exactly for today, but I have position descriptions from Sean gave me a lot of information from Lander and Humboldt and then the other counties as well.
Together.
Yeah, and we just need to.
That Persian counties needs.
Yeah.
You know, unless I'm missing something, isn't it still a question of revenue expectancy or Medicaid? Isn't that something that needs to solve?
Right, immediately, yes.
So that's a question leads to who's going to do that. I understand this conversation. It's the county's responsibility. That being said, uh, is there anybody on county staff that can do that? If not, can we hire somebody, a consultant, somebody to get this going? Otherwise, it seems to me like you're still not getting to the point of doing Medicare Medicaid. This is a very difficult thing to do. It's not a minor thing. Uh, Medicare Medicaid payments are very time-sensitive. It's codes paid and everything. I mean, it has to be exact that comes back. And it seems to me like that really needs to be a high priority to keep studying this revenue so that you can do some of these other things without revenue.
A lot of the information on those applications is fire department information, like their licensing for the ambulance. I would not have been able to do it without Christopher Remza helping.
Right. So what we're going to have to.
County stuff that the county has.
So would you be willing to submit the application if we can gather everything together? I I don't.
I mean, logins can be changed.
Yeah.
Like I have to do it.
Okay.
You have to call.
I didn't have login before I did it.
But we have Patty.
You have to call. You can't just you can't just change a login. You have to call Medicaid.
Well, yeah, I had to do that. I didn't have a login prior to submitting that.
Anyway, we will make sure that I will work with whomever, with Marty, with Rodney, with Patty Wilcox, with the hospital, whomever we need to do to get this done as quickly as possible. I didn't do that yet only because I was working on this other thing. But we will do that. And then I'm I'm going to need your help too, probably. But we will get this done. And then from now on, if there is a coordinator that is hired, that individual will have to make sure these things are done and in a timely manner. Um, and then I put a call into Sharp, but they didn't call me back. Um, probably because they don't know me from Adam and were wondering why I was calling. But, um, I did call them. And so that's that's the next priority. But this board, uh, I don't know. I guess we can take action. Yeah. So it's up to this board what you want to do. But we need, number one, if that's what you want to do is hire somebody, we need to work with the fire, with Marty and Rodney and Sean, who's a great resource, get a job description put together that meets our needs. Get an advertisement out, figure out what salary range we want to hire. Or we could wait until we look at what we get as far as applications. Um, but anyway, that's the decision for this board to make.
I will make a motion to approve. What is this called? An EMS coordinator? Is that what we call it?
Yeah.
To approve hiring an EMS coordinator. And then based salary later, uh, along with the job description.
And I will say.
But the first part of that is you have to come up with a job description.
Yes.
Before you can, you know, even put it out there, we have to do that.
Yeah, but I think.
Well, we can at least approve it so that we can take that step forward.
And then I don't know what the schedule is as far as both of you. But we could come up with a job description fairly quickly. Um, and if I don't know if you're available for a special meeting at some point before a regular meeting or not, I I don't know your schedules.
Okay, two things. One, we have a motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Sean, you're still on, right?
Yes, sir.
In your, uh.
Go ahead.
In your bag of tricks, do you have somewhat of a job description for what we're trying to do?
It's in your job descriptions under Lander. But yes, go ahead, Sean. I'm sorry.
I sent, yeah, I sent Carol some stuff, uh, just based on, uh, what I what I do on a daily basis, things that I think would be important to, uh, to get in there.
Thank you.
So I think we could come up with a job description fairly quickly. That would meet everybody's needs. We could look at a salary range and make approval on it. But, you know, again, I don't know if you want to wait until the sixth to do this. Um, or if you want to, um, you know, meet before then. I don't know your schedules.
Well, NACO is what the twenty seventh, the twenty eighth, twenty ninth and thirtieth? Correct.
I'm sorry.
NACO?
Oh, NACO, yeah. It's the twenty eighth, twenty ninth and thirtieth, yeah.
I think you're gonna have to wait till the sixth.
It's gonna have to wait till the sixth.
Okay. And that's fine. And I'll I'll work on the Medicare and Medicaid before then. And, um, but yeah, we could put it out. I mean, we've waited this long. So if it's all right with the board, I'll work on a job description.
Yes.
With Sean and Marty and everyone. And then we'll also make a recommendation on salary. Um, just, I mean, you know what we can afford, basically.
Right.
But, um, just kind of look at that. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
That works for me. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
So that manual that I gave you, that book, you could give that to Rodney if you want. If, you know, it's.
I'll do that.
I mean, if he wants it. I mean, I just thought it was nice to have everything in one spot. Yeah, it's it's fine. I have, I don't know if Rain wanted one of that. Did you want one, Rain?
Okay, so we're good?
Yeah, with that.
At least we're out. We're we're starting on that.
Yeah.
So we have some other items on the agenda. The first one up is a workshop to discuss, uh, law enforcement center, uh, personnel issues and department head meetings.
I would like us to continue with workshops so that, one, we we need to figure out what we're doing with the law enforcement center. We have what property we're going to use. We can come up with a design and if we don't already have one that's two-story and at least go forward so we have some idea of the cost and and what the needs are. And I think it's important. Also, equipment needs, um, for that building as well as what the sheriff needs in the future. And then, um, future personnel needs. Where we've overtaxed our IT department, we've overtaxed other areas that we need assistance in. And I think we just need to have some really honest conversations on how we can go forward and and fund some of those positions and what those persons would do. Um, Justin, I know needs help and.
I agree, but we don't have the revenue to fund this.
Yes, and that's why we need to look at some of the other things that we're doing. Like our sales tax revenue and some of, and we need to talk about budget. Um, the other thing is we need to talk to our department heads and find out what's happening with them. Employee morale is is an issue. Um, Clark County and Mineral County have gone to four-day workdays to help with their employees. Um, salaries are a problem, which we know we're going to be going into negotiations. And again, revenue is a huge issue. Um, but we we need to be able to talk about these things openly. And we don't normally have time in a meeting.
I agree.
Um, you know, and even if it's just an hour, it doesn't have to be hours or half a morning or anything like that. And then as commissioners, our responsibility is to set policy, to set direction and goals. And I think that's the part that we haven't really had time to do. And, um, you know, for our department heads, they need to operate independently and know that they have our support in everything that they are doing and that they're on the right track. And our our department heads need to, they're hired to do a job for this county. And commissioners liaisons are just that liaisons. They are not, they shouldn't be micromanaging their departments. And we and we've all tended, we've all tended to get too involved in some of our departments. And I think we need to have, maybe we need to have a workshop where we talk about the commission and what our goals are and where we need.
Commission is to set policy, not the daily running of every department in this county. That's why we hire the personnel to do it for us. We shouldn't be doing it.
And it impacts employee morale a great deal, not just the departments that, um, are being, are being overseen too tightly, but also, um, the employees who watch and see what's happening. And so that that's a a big issue. And, um, so I I think we need to talk about those things too, without getting personally upset about stuff. Um, we all want what's best for the county, all of us sitting here, everybody. All the department heads, every person that works for us wants what's best for the county. And we need to make sure we don't get off track a little bit. So anyway, those were my thoughts. I'd like us to continue with workshops. And if we need to have a mediator, um, when we talk about the commission and and what our role as a as commissioners are, that might be a really good idea too.
Well, we're here. Let's talk about it.
Okay. So.
You want to start with the jail first?
Okay.
Sure.
Has that been discussed?
Um, I I would really like us to set a workshop where I think we have an architect drawing, maybe with a two-story building. But it's been so long ago and we've had so many things. And I know Commissioner Rackley and Jerry Allen have done a lot of research. Jerry, you can come on up of what's needed in this building, but I think we can do it on the footprint that we have. And do it within, you know, reasonable costs.
We have an L-shaped lot currently where the the current law enforcement center sits and the other two lots, it's an L-shaped lot. Can we not put it on that footprint?
Jerry, come on up.
There's a lot of variables with that question. The thing, do you want to be a two-story facility? Do we, does the county really have that much of a need to keep the building that's currently there? A lot of things depend on what the county wants to to meet today's standards. You're going to be really, really tight to do it in that that small of a footprint.
Even with a two-story?
I maybe.
But if.
Because you add another story, you add more, you you bring in more issues.
And if we didn't keep the building that is existing, would there be enough room? And then the logistics of what do you do while you're building with the inmates?
Right. There's, like I said, there's a lot of variables to that question. If we were to demolish that building and open up that property, the potential exists that we could make it a more usable facility than trying to shoehorn it into that that small section of property on the that borders on Cornell.
And then what do you do with the current needs?
Yeah, we had that discussion as far as you, how would you operate? I know you can send people to Fallon or whatever.
We could try to do that, yeah. I mean, that's only gonna be a short-term solution. It would not be a long-term solution.
No.
Uh, the best solution would be to try and enter into some kind of agreement with the state, but with the state being short, shorthanded. I'm not sure that that's conducive right now. There's there's things that we can bet out. We just, we haven't gotten to that point to where we can start even trying to look for those agreements. Because we've had so many, uh, different ideations of how this is going to play out, so.
So one of the other things that was talked about a long time ago was the metal shop that's that's the business that's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly, um, seeing if that individual would be willing maybe to take some property that we have in the industrial park that the county owns free and clear. And that maybe we would have some type of agreement where we could put up a metal building for them in exchange for the property or something.
Right.
And I mean, is is that even a possibility?
I don't know. I mean, you'd have to talk to the owners of that.
But I mean, that's something that we could discuss with them.
Right.
And see, yes or no. I mean, that's all we need to know.
Right.
And then.
Two-hundred?
Yes.
Sign down and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. I I only knew of Yanni. I didn't know the other. But, you know, perhaps that would be, and that would kind of clean up that area as well.
Clear off that property.
And that would provide the extra room that we might need.
Potentially, yes, as long as you demolish the building that's currently there.
Yeah.
Working, but that that's seems to be the biggest issue is trying to work, create a workaround and leave the the current building where it stands.
But again, my question is, okay, let's say we demolish that building. I don't know the timeframe, like if we started building and doing, would we need to demolish that building right away? Or would it be part of the footprint of the new building? See, we don't know what it looks like.
Yeah.
So that we don't know whether we could keep that building temporarily.
Right, and that would all be discussions you'd have to have with the architect.
Right.
And the builders, because that would all have to go to the planning department.
And so what I'm thinking is we need to have a meeting with the architect to discuss all of this and to see what is possible. And maybe a couple meetings to talk about. I mean, we can convey to them what we're thinking, but we need them to come in and tell us what's feasible and possible.
Right.
So where do we get the revenue to pay for this?
We might have to float a bond. I don't know. And then how do we pay for the bond? It's the payments that we're concerned about. And, you know, the USDA loans, we can get a USDA loan.
We don't, we need the payments.
You still have to.
Yes, but we also have the things that are going to be happening in our county that could possibly bring in that revenue. And rather than wait until the revenue is here, let's get the plan going so that we know what we're doing, so that when the revenue is here, we can implement it. That's what I'm thinking.
Want to think another part of this equation too, is we probably should start talking with the judges.
Yes.
There's a lot of legislature, legislation and a lot of rules of the courts are coming down that are wanting to get, um, arrestees out more exponentially.
Mm-hmm.
So the fact of the matter is, we may not even need that much bigger of a facility. Yes, would have to be modernized, but we may not need that much bigger of a facility depending on how the courts and the legislations are going. Things are obviously on the on the pendulum are swinging to not keeping people in custody. And so if we're not going to keep them in custody, there would be the need for that much, uh, space, at least for the long term, we would still need, um, as we do. Um, as we do today, the the biggest problem we come into is the separation of inmates for different classifications that have to be protected.
And also too, whether or not like the justice court and justice um offices should be part of the law enforcement center for not just convenience, but everything else to make it all one. District court, I don't know. You know, I I don't want to see district court taking over the whole courthouse. But in my mind, I'm thinking if the justice court was out of those areas, that would free up some offices for some other positions that might be needed within the county in in time. Um, you know, we need a county manager. The, the research and stuff that we end up doing as commissioners, really, if you had a county manager, that individual would work with their staff, and I'm not talking a huge staff, but they would work with the department heads and everyone. They would gather information and they would be bringing things to the commission for us to make decisions and to help with goal setting, and we would be able to set policy and direction. And those are things that we should be doing rather than managing each of these departments. It would also have solved a lot of problems we had in the past year with the community center. There were some personnel issues that came up there that would have, in my personal opinion, would have been handled right from the beginning, and we may not have been where we are now. The senior center, the same thing, there have been issues where we've had everybody walk. Why did everybody walk?
Well, there's been a lot of, in the last seven years, there's been a lot of things that have changed, not only in this county, but nationwide.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's, i- i- in some aspects, I'm glad that we did not go forward with building the jail, you know, four years ago. Uh, because a lot of things have changed and we have already had to retrofit it, so. Um, but I mean, those, those are some of those things and like Commissioner Hudson said, you know, we we can't have it if we can't afford it, so.
But we can't have it if we don't have a plan that's ready. And one of the things that, I mean, we can work on the funding. I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow or even before I'm out of office. But if you have a design, if you have what you feel is going to be needed to be built, and let's say the revenue starts coming in because we've got the sand farm, we've got some other things that are happening. And yeah, we can make those mo- those yearly payments. Then instead of starting from scratch, you've at least got, okay, this is what we've decided on. Yeah, you might have to tweak it a tiny bit because things may have changed, but you can at least go forward. And it's what you would almost call shovel-ready rather than it's, we've got to start from the beginning. And um, that's all I'm thinking of is let's just get this so that it's as set as it can be. Let's seriously talk about whether we need the justice court as part of that and freeing up those offices, because if we do IT, where is IT going to go?
Right.
Um, and for right now, IT could, you know, it's not going to happen tomorrow, Justin, but we can't afford to build another building for you either. You know, we're, we're looking at all of these things.
Yeah, and I think in three, maybe four of the designs that are pitched, that we always um planned for IT and the phones and all that.
Yeah.
And in the
The new building, because it would be the
And in the last design, uh, justice court was in that.
Yeah.
In that building.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, the designs that you already have is is that in the footprint where it is now?
No, that was on the footprint of the, of the lot.
With the, with having the, with the, and abandoning that street was the, the most recent two, I think, two ideations of of the plans. Next comment, the wrong word, ideation, that's coming over, but in the two
Variations.
Yes, that we, that we had the last two um were within that footprint.
Well, I think that we need to look at the footprint we have. Um, we can, you know, do you want to discuss with the owners to see if there would be, I don't know what this board would want to do, but to see if there would be any interest in something like that.
I gotta go back to the office, I can just swing by.
Just see if there's any interest. And what they, i- if, because this commission has to make that decision. I can't make it, but see if there's any willingness to discuss it. And then um, then I, we need to get with the architects and do it on the footprint that we have. Because that's the footprint we're going to have. We, the windmill party, that's going to be a successful business. That's going to bring more revenue in to the city and and the county and and I think help juvenileate our downtown and everything else. So I'm excited about that, just like everybody else is. But we've got to look positively at, this is what we've got. Let's work with what we've got. And um, so that, that's, those are my thoughts.
Sure.
And then equipment needs, I know you need, you know, you've got deputies and and vehicles and things like that that we need to talk about. How are we going to fund those things? And um, one of the assessments that I noticed another county did was um for um law enforcement vehicles. It has to go to the voters.
Right.
You know, and and it should go to the voters, and maybe they don't want to do this, but it does occur to ask. And I'm not saying go to the voters and and have a whole, you know, list of stuff, but I mean, let's just find out if there's any interest in helping us, you know, with some of these things. Because we are limited to what we can do.
We have a whole bunch of vehicles over here. Can we not auction those off?
There's a few of them that we're going to be putting in the auction this year.
And, and
I mean, I've had a, a new vehicle at the office for a month and a half now. Um, but it's still six, eight weeks out before they can even get the equipment to install it.
But I think we need to have an auction and we need to have a county auction regularly. Um, as soon as those vehicles, I don't know, building, planning and building, did they get their truck yet? Because they had requested one.
No, I think he was working on ordering it.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
But I mean, even if we have a small auction and we get rid of some of this stuff.
Right.
And have it, you know, every six months, let's have an auction.
Yeah, I have one at a road shop. I just tend to pull the radio on the
Mm-hmm.
Um, camera system out of it, so it'll be reused.
And then that money goes back to whatever fund funded that vehicle.
Mm-hmm. That one doesn't need to go to the search and rescue.
Not one of them.
Not.
Yeah, it's beat up. There may be another one we can move to search and rescue, then we'll probably take unit ten out since unit tens are oldest.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, Karen, do you want to come up? We were talking about the law enforcement center. And the way the, the legislation's going in the new laws, and i- it's something that we need to discuss is when we build the law enforcement center, whenever that is, I mean, it may be a couple of years down the road because we don't have the revenue, but we're talking about coming up with a shovel-ready design um for it is, you know, possibility of putting a justice court and everything in there. And you'd have a, a newer facility that would have, you know, instead of patching, which you've done an excellent job of, instead of doing that, we could actually have what is needed in there. And it would, you'd be closer to, you know, the arraignments and everything else that needs to be done.
No, we had that conversation before, you were really in favor of it.
And as of right now, I'm not in favor of moving the whole justice court over, maybe like a, like a courtroom to do like the four-eight-hour hearings during the week or arraignments, but not the whole court.
Okay, but why? I'm just asking.
I just, I just like it here. I think it, I think it should be in the courthouse.
Okay, well, that's a decision the commissioners will make, but I mean, that's why we're asking is what, you know, but you just like it here, that's the only reason.
I think it should be here. I think the court should be here. I don't think that the court should be over there with the law enforcement center. I think they, they should be separate. It's not just for people who are detained.
Yeah.
Pardon me? The justice court, isn't it just for people who are detained at the law enforcement center? It's for evictions.
Evictions.
Lots of other things. All this other stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so you have some other notes? Do you have other questions?
Oh, no, I'm just, no, I'm just taking notes.
Okay, but we need to have that input and we need to know. So think about it and maybe you could provide something to Karen, you know, why you, you don't feel, or what you feel would work best.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's also um zooming or, you know, teleconference video, yeah, we talked about that.
Hearings.
And, and arrangements and stuff like that, so. And then, yeah, now with um abuse cases, you have to have those actually heard in court. Um, domestic violence, is it?
One domestic violence, we know, uh, they could actually have a jury trial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so those are being held in
Is that through justice court or district court?
Just
Justice court.
So your courtroom is no, no, we would, we share with the district court.
Yeah, for that.
Have, we, we haven't had any of those yet?
One.
Yeah, I've had one.
One guy, yeah, one guy canceled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was called for Jerry, did you?
Oh, thank you.
Um, so if you could put down some of your thoughts, the pros and the cons, and get them to Karen so that we can get them, and then if you'll talk to the metal company people. And you know, again, it's just a thought. I'm not, i- it's something the commission has to decide.
Well, you need the information.
Yeah, we do.
And I would, I would really like to see new updated architect drawings, drawings on the footprint we have.
Did they ever get those last ones? I don't remember actually.
No, they were still working on it when we did the lot thing over here and they told me to stop everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, who will contact the architects?
Jerry and I will.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
I just have to ask one.
Sure.
Okay, so the building, the new bill, or building is not going to be a rebuilding probably?
No, it will be.
Law enforcement center, the whole thing would be new.
Oh, yeah.
So then that's where you would be thinking about putting the justice court?
Yes. Yes. They were putting that in the design itself.
And whether it's just, you know, a courtroom for arraignments or videoing or whatever, or the whole department, I, just the pros and the cons. I mean, you know better than we do what hazards are, you know, what things not, might not work as well or something. And then there's other departments affected too, the DA's office, the public defender, you know, um. And we have the conference rooms here and the law library and all that, but I mean, something that needs to be pros and cons.
So would it be the, so, so the justice court will be the only one that could possibly be moved over?
Yes.
Their office? Not the district attorney's office, not?
I don't know.
If, the whole thing that was discussed and the architect was working on it was adding a courtroom and facilities.
Okay. And I think mainly it was because of the way the legislation has changed with like doing quicker arrangements and and things like that. So, anyway.
And um, when you need this, as soon as
Maybe before our next meeting, is that possible, the sixth, October sixth?
That's pretty fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Anyway, thanks, Karen. I'm not causing, trying to cause you stress.
Oh, no, it's good.
We just need to know pros and cons.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the, the next one, solution to personnel needs?
Getting there.
Okay.
The chairman was getting there.
Chair, I will hush. Excuse me.
So the next one is solutions for future personnel needs. Uh, we have had some issues uh with people leaving uh for one reason or another. The hiring process, uh, I think as we all know, has been kind of altered because of the unemployment income. They've had income, uh, didn't need to look for a job. They were, they were depending on unemployment. That is, that unemployment is now going away. So what do we, what do we do if we have some more issues?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
A- and it costs money too, but I don't know if we need to do another salary set, but it's just hard for me because I was taught, you know, you follow the salary schedule. And there's these new employees coming in making more than my staff, and my staff has way more responsibilities than they do. So it's just, it's hard and it's been hard to keep people.
Mm-hmm, and I agree with you. It's a, it's a morale thing. Because we have individuals who came in at step one, worked their way through. Maybe it's taken them five years or however long it is to get to, you know, the, up to a certain step, and we're bringing people in at step seven, step three, step five.
I can't compete with that. It's not in my budget and it's not fair for my staff, but
And our starting salaries are ridiculous.
It's, you know, you, people come to you, they apply for a job, and one of the questions they ask, of course, is what does that job pay? You tell them and it's almost like bam bam. Uh, is that all you can pay? I can make that much money, but dogs.
But I've lost employees other departments for that exact reason. And I, I, you know, obviously I'm biased because it's my office, but I feel like my staff has a lot more responsibility than my staff.
Well, I, I think one of the things when we go into negotiations this time is we really need to look at the salaries, but also too, we have the issue of how do we pay for them? I mean, that's always the issue.
Well, that always is the issue, and I mean, one of the big issues is right there is the sheriff's department. It's hard for the sheriff to fill vacancies because of uh what we start a deputy as.
It's hard to build any position in this county, at county level because of the wages we pay.
Very true.
And honestly, we are comparable to like counties. But when you have counties surrounding you that pay lots more, it's, it's difficult.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, obviously, we can't compare ourselves to both counties. They have a lot more
Yeah, I'm sure it shows.
But we lose people to them too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're totally comparable to mineral counties, but
Good.
But, and it's like in the, the sheriff's deputies, um, other counties are offering incentives, moving incentives, bonus incentives, um, Jerry knows better than I, but different incentives to come to work.
I would like to see when we do hire people that we follow HR's guidelines because she goes off what the salary is, the salary schedule is, instead of bringing him in and hiring.
Yeah, like I was always told, you have a new hire, they started a one.
Yes. And then if they have a lot of experience as far as an admin, they could possibly
They could do admin one and admin two, but they still started a one at whatever that point.
But why have a HR person if we don't follow the recommendations of that HR person? There again, it's going the commissioners are not
We're too involved in our departments. And because of that, um, we're, we're we're not following HR. HR is a department for a reason. And um, and it does cause issues with our other employees when we bring people in at higher levels.
It's causing issues countywide.
Mm-hmm, yes. And I would be upset too. If I, if I were working in Lacy's department and I was brought in at one and and then I see somebody else brought in at a three or a seven or a five or whatever. And you know, th- those individuals have good experience as well. But um, so I think that we need to seriously look at when we do salary. I never liked the word salary resolutions, because to me, that always meant it was um, it was a debated thing or some, I don't know, but it's, it is salary adjustments or something. But the salary resolutions, before we approve any of them, I want to look at what is recommended by HR, and yes, we can overrule, you know, HR if that's the decision of the commission, but I think we need to look at those for our own employees' sake, so.
So is the board considering amending uh the personnel policies for like that?
I think
There's some guidance for department heads and HR.
I think so.
It's a huge good idea.
I think that we need to um, department heads are over their departments and I, I take seriously their recommendations, but I also think that some of them are de- are um bypassing HR and not using those services and um going, you know, that way. And there's other things too, like, you know, if we have a vacancy, let's get the ad out right away. We, we authorized HR before we meet that, that HR could put out the advertisement. And yet there's times when HR is waiting for a department head or someone to say they're okay to get that ad out. And then it just delays.
I don't understand why HR needs the county, the commissioners to approve advertising.
No, they don't, but she can do that, but
The advertisements happen coming out. There are some switches. One, I will confess, that was my error of dating. The others were errors on the newspaper's card.
It's a newspaper, it's hard to hold. You called me on it several times Carol, but it was.
I'm not referring to that, okay? I'm not referring to that. What I'm referring to.
When Lacy has an advertisement, she is given permission to put it out. There has been no issue with advertising.
There was a huge delay in the senior director advertisement. And it wasn't because of ads delays. It was because someone told. Someone told HR to hold off on advertising. And we should have gotten the advertisement out right away. There's advertisements for cooks that don't get in right away. And I'm not talking about HR not doing it. I'm talking about HR waiting for a department head. And what I'm saying is, don't wait for the department head to, to get the ad out. And maybe what we need to do is like the DA suggested is revise some of the personnel policies. Which you've been working on anyway and need to bring forward. But I'm not pointing a finger at you. I'm just saying that there are some things that are operating smoothly for a lot of different reasons. And it's not HR and it's not, you know, it's just, we need to do these things and get them done. There's applications that don't make it to the commissioners and then or HR. Ahead of time before an interview.
Yeah. Well, I think maybe that needs to be more clear because I know when I first came to work for the county, most of the applications came through my office.
Yeah.
They have their roster and I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying I want to do that.
But see.
People are confused. They always come to me and ask and we try to send them to the right place, but.
I think it's confusing, so I think those are things we need.
It's not confusing. I will say I was blindsided a couple of weeks ago. Because I didn't know enough. And I don't like that feeling and I don't ever want it to happen again. I would like everything to go through HR.
So, you know, whether, I don't have a problem with all the applications going through the clerk's office. Because there's multiple people there, you know, all the time.
And at least they're willing to do it for all of them. That's fine. I've been trying to alleviate.
You've been helping out.
Well, I don't understand why it needs to go to Lacy's office if we have an HR person. Why don't they all go to HR?
I, it doesn't matter to me where they go, as long as there's a central place. You know. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just simply saying that it's gotten. It's fractured.
It is fractured and it's not working and it needs to be fixed.
Yes.
Well, I, I mean, if my office is a central location and then HR can them over to Karen, because my office is always staff. That's why, I mean, it's, it is, it's confusing for people. Because they don't know if they go to the road department or, you know, and people don't want to go through out there for that.
Well, that's something that you and Karen need to work out. That every application needs to go end up at Karen's.
So anyway, those are things that. We need to put in personnel policies and you and Lacy and Karen, you guys can work out those details. And get the wording so that we know what's going on. But yes, we're very fractured and it's gotten worse. Over time. And it's nobody in particular's fault. It's, I, we have to take responsibility as a commission. For that. Because there's three of us here. So did you have anything else? Does anybody else have anything?
I would like to say now that, um. Now that the senior center is fully staffed. I think that that commissioner needs to step back and let his new director. Do it herself.
That really sounds good, except there's a. Just because you get somebody hired doesn't mean they know how to do the job. Some, there's training involved. Who else is going to do that training?
The state, state can do.
The state?
The state will help her do all of her paperwork. I know this because it's been done before. The problem with this is. You had two cooks, now you're down to one cook. And. There was a. Quite a discussion between you and Carol last Wednesday. That I knew nothing about until after the fact. And I think that you are way too involved as a county commissioner. You are a liaison. You are not to be doing Gisella's job. You hired her for a reason.
Come on, do her job.
Then step back and let her do her job. If she has questions, she can contact you. If she has an issue with any of the paperwork involving the state, she can contact Mary at the state.
Also, we have a former director that I know without asking would be willing to spend a little time with Gisella to bring her up to.
And she's, she's done that and she's good at that.
Okay, so then we don't need, then the commissioner liaison does not need to be involved. And we also don't need to have a volunteer in the kitchen doing the, the cooking and stuff. You know. We've got issues that. That have arisen and problems with personnel because we are too involved as commissioners.
Are you done with that?
I, I said what I had to say.
So we have another item here with department head meetings.
Um, again, it's up to the department heads. You, you guys have to tell us, but I'm thinking that we need to sit down outside of a mi- a meeting. And maybe whether it's one-on-one with each of you or as a group. But we, we need to be able to help you guys instead of hindering you. With some things and we need, I think other departments need to know what's happening in, in the other departments. To some degree. I think the communication's broken down a little bit. And I know that employee morale is is very poor for a lot of reasons. One is salaries. The other is this COVID business and masks and everything else that's been going on for almost two years now. And I would like to see us do some things as a commission, maybe to help, but I'd like some ideas from department heads. What can we do? You know, would a four-day work week be of a benefit? And if it is, let's do it. Um, if mineral can do it and Clark County can do it, we can do it. If it's having a potluck every once in a while that we as commissioners barbecue or something. I don't know the answers. I just would like to hear what we can do for our employees to make their life a little bit easier. And, you know. Us up here as a commission. Kibb is seeing back and forth and saying things to one another that really. We should be acting above board on everything. That impacts employee morale too. And I hate to see that. I hate to see that I have to say something or another commissioner has to say something to me because I'm not. I'm out of line in some way. And. You know, I'm just as guilty as everybody else. We all want to do the best job we can, but we need to hear from you guys. And there's got to be ways and I know your employees talk to you. And I know salary is an issue. I know the COVID's been an issue, but there's other things going on too. And you, you're aware of what's going on in other departments more so than we are. And, and how we can maybe fix things. I, I don't know what else to say. And Shayla, maybe you've got something to add or Lacy or, or Karen. I know Ju- Justin had his hand up.
So from, from my, from my perspective. What I. Is. You know, Shayla's right. Who hired, who hired us to run our departments. And when we as department heads determine that we need help that can only come from above us. They continue and ask for that help.
Right.
You know, at first, at first, at first it's like, okay, yeah, we'll help you. And then that help gets either cut back or just pulled out. Some, sometimes in a very confusing way that it came to the plan. This, it just blends together. So. Um, you know, and, and we've, we've had department heads. Considering finding other jobs. Because we can't get the help we asked for. We all, we all realize that, yeah, I mean, it's an issue. That's, that's why we come to you as, as the board of commissioners. Because we know that's an issue. We want to work with you to, to find the best solution for our departments. And for the, and, and definitely within the county budget. But. We either get told, yeah, we'll work on that or, you know, just no. And just, we need help. I need help.
Also, James Evans came to the board for help and basically was denied help. So it is an issue.
And you can't just like piecemeal positions together, like make a full-time position because that just creates more.
It does. It creates a problem.
Yes.
Yeah. So.
I know that many counties have a manager department that be sometimes weekly and sometimes. Monthly and that includes a life official showing up and he doesn't. Very much so.
Yeah. And I, I think that that's a good suggestion. I think that we need to open our communication better. Just because we're commissioners and we're elected by the people, you guys just, a lot of the department heads are elected by. The constituents as well. So you are taxed with doing certain jobs that, that we shouldn't be interfering with. And like in Justin's case, yeah, there's no question you need help. James, if what he really needs help with is the minutes on meetings, then maybe we can have somebody do that as an extra. Job, you know, like, like we do for the rec board and, and different things. So there, there are ways of looking at it.
I will say that, I don't know about the other commissioners, but I speak to my department heads at least weekly.
And I do as well. I do as well. But there's other departments though that we are not over. That we're not communicating with that much unless they bring us an issue or if I make a trip like to Rain's office and. And sit down and talk to her, which she's always great. And so is, are all of them, you know, Lori and everybody else. Lacy is a department head. That we don't necessarily, you know, we're not a liaison for, but we.
Right.
But we don't always know what's going on and how we can help and how we're hindering.
Well, I will say. Sometimes too, as electeds, don't always feel like we have your support either.
Yes. Yeah, and that's bad.
I will say with Rain and Lori, if they have an issue, I've heard about it. Lacy? Not too much, but.
I'm pretty good.
You know?
I would, yeah.
We hear about it, but we don't hear about it as a commission. We hear it as an individual. And then as an individual, we can't make a correction. Or make a decision and we shouldn't be. We should be meeting as a commission saying, okay, yeah, she's. This person's got a good point here and maybe this is something we need to really look at and fix.
So maybe once a month on our regular commission days, we have a department head meeting. That way we meet as a commission with all the department heads.
It's, you know, again, it's up to the, the department heads and their schedules.
Or once every three months. So, because I know they're all busy.
I'm finally at the point where I feel that I cannot help the commissioners.
Yeah. Hello Heidi.
Hi, no, yeah. I do not have the support of commissioners.
Yeah.
That's why.
And, and I know it's, it's really frustrating.
It's very frustrating and I only have six more years of service that I need. I don't have to do it here.
Yep. And you could make more money working for justice court probably, like everybody else has.
I'm here because I love the county and because I love what I'm doing. But I'm not here, you know, for money, to earn more money. Heidi is not my, it's my problem. I'm doing a job because I was tasked with it, that I'm not being supported.
And, and I agree with you. And so what we need to do as a commission is we need to listen. And we need to find out why.
Yeah.
And, and what can we do to make?
I want to know why my own morale is in the dirt. I know I did the dirt last year pretty hard. I work hard. I worked my butt off last year. I didn't go home. I didn't catch money. I don't support it. I think the bottom line is that we all have to remember, elected official down to an employee. We're here, we're paid to do a job. That's what we're supposed to be doing. Lots of people are, you know. You know, John will ask this, you know, pushing stuff. We're here to do a job and get what we do it. I personally think I'm paid okay to do my job. And I said, okay. I always. We have twenty-seven, we need courage now. And maybe we did. I'm here for what I want to be here. But that job regrets on me. So the bottom line is.
And, and I know that's a frustration to some employees because they're aware of other employees. That are on Facebook during the day, that are on the internet, that, you know, are doing personal business and stuff like that. And, you know, that, that's an employee morale issue too.
I'm a different woman now, there's a range in this. If it wasn't for her, I would be gone.
I think your whole department would be gone if it wasn't for Reed. And Reed would be gone except for you guys, seriously.
And she, I'm not going to lie to you. I believe I thought we went through. A nervous breakdown last year, but she was there at her weekend with me, making sure everything that done. She was encouraging me to go, she encouraged me with that. When my dad died, she'd be waiting for me that night when I get home. Seeing him in the hospital, ready to enter accounts payable, so they were here to give advice that Wednesday. People started looking together, not against. It's just this county is. I'm sorry. It's a dispute.
Well, we have accountability issues with people not turning in paperwork timely, vouchers, time sheets. And those are just a couple of examples.
It baffles me that the front line can't turn in their time cards. Like seriously?
Yeah.
I've trained more people in the last probably eight years than my entire career. In a little bit three years, right? I have never seen a commissioner step into the position as a director. And that place over there is for you know, for sure. It's there with me. I tried it.
Yeah. And I.
It needs to change is the problem.
Yeah, and I told Reed that. And actually I put it out in an email that it, it's thanks to Reed and you and Chris. That things, we got things straightened out over there.
Well, you, you, I have never been in a lot. You've lost one, one director over there that had what it took to take care of that person.
Right.
There were things that were allowed to happen over there. That I've been one question very loudly. I have a daughter that is devastated because of that.
Yeah.
But because her and her employees and.
And, and hopefully we have that turned around. And these two.
Also, but you need to step out. You need to step out.
I know.
That place needs to run on someone with or without you. And I will continue to help until the day that I leave.
You helped us because they were two months behind on paying bills and boy.
And you still have lots to go.
Oh, yeah.
You guys are able to run that place. But I will help again until she is ready to go. And I'm sorry, I probably will end up walking off the boat, not training anyone. Not answering any calls.
I'll be out of the commission by then.
You will.
Well, and.
I'm very passionate about the senior center and the lady from Wells, I don't remember maybe. I offered to help her as a volunteer. Just sign me up and I'll come over and write, write grants for you. I mean, I, and I don't need to be involved on any level other than I just am passionate about. So I'd be to help as well.
There's three previous directors, Lori included, if I'm sure what, any way they could. I, I offer, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, like wanting compensation or any two of those. I'm just passionate.
Jordan has helped a lot and she's volunteered to help again. Got a question.
One thing you have to talk about is you have a whole bunch of people in the community who are volunteers who serve on boards. Some of the boards function very well, some of them don't. Keep going a hundred minutes online. Some of them have minutes, some of them don't. They don't report with it. Those people really don't. Also, boards have a purpose, I believe, in helping the commission and the community. Bring issues before you. I, I had discussions with several board members at other places. It seemed to get upset because, you know, you guys change what they come up with. And I have to remind them that they are advisors. They are not elected. They bring stuff to you. And that is your. And that is your decision because they are appointed. But they need to have that opportunity to bring those issues before you and not to take. That and in the end are coming in the back door on the boards. You want to do something, find a date and let your boards know it. But don't destroy their morale. By doing things, I mean, you ask them, the community, ask them to volunteer their time. Then if you come in the back door on them, just like Shayla was talking about since then, board members feel the same way. So please keep that in mind with your boards. Keep them informed so they can help you.
Well, also too, the advisory boards are supposed to advise. We're not supposed to go in and run the meeting. And tell them what is happening, you know, or what's going to be done.
They just need to know that if there are certain things that they can comment on, I mean, they're out in the community. They're people that have been in this community a long time. They're volunteering. They're not being paid. So, you know, just realize that they may have some thoughts. They also need to realize that that's your decision. They only bring those before you, for your final decision.
And then we also have a department head and it's no one in this room, okay? So nobody get defensive that comes to work when they feel like it, and we need to fix that issue. And we really do, and it's been a problem for a long time, and we need to have that discussion. And. And it's a department head. It's not an elected official. But. Anyway, I won't say anymore about that because, but there are things that need to be addressed. And. So, you know, would, if we're having a meeting, October sixth is our next meeting. Would it be a a good thing to have a department head meeting like at one o'clock after that meeting? Is that a possibility? And then we can talk openly.
Maybe we should buy lunch for the department heads and have lunch.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah. And the only reason I said one was because make sure we were done. I don't know how how. But if it's twelve noon or whatever, but yeah, let's buy lunch. For whomever comes. And I mean, if there's some employees that want to come too, that's fine. I don't care. But. I think we need to have an honest discussion.
We do.
And this has been really good, I think, because it if we we've been honest. You've said, you know, some stuff. I I appreciate Lacy, your comments, and Karen yours, and Justin and Ted and Pat sitting there. Not saying a word, but Heidi and Lori and Reed and and Bonnie, you know, all of you. And Karen, there's things that we do to make your life frustrated too, I know. You know, it's just like me asking about moving to justice court. I'm sure that goes blah, you know, but all I want to know is the pros and the cons. Okay.
It's like, we need to have better conversations all across this county.
I think that we all, you know, we all love Persian County and the jobs that we do, but I'll tell you, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, it's. Harder to come to work lately than it has been in the past.
Yes. And and I know that, and I feel that. I still love my job. I don't know what's wrong with me, but. I still love doing it and I'm going to miss it, but at the same time, I'm going to be grateful too when I'm turned out. But I I would like to see us on the right track and and improve on things. Anyway, I, is there anything? You haven't said a word.
I apologize, but I've got a district court hearing, so I have to go up to that.
That's not saying a word. Do you think that this has been a good discussion and that?
Yeah, I do, but I think that. I think that you've talked about a lot of things, but I think that we need to take steps to resolve. Some of those issues rather than just talking about them. And there should probably be a meeting to follow up on this. So that some of those problems can be addressed, such as amending the personnel policies. So that there's a a standard that department heads can follow, a standard that HR can follow.
Should we also have a guideline for the commission?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea to develop policies for the commission.
Is that there are, they are out there. Other counties have them, and I think Naco has. And I think that would be a good thing. Because as I understand it, we are policymakers.
That's exactly right.
And I'll be truthfully, I would like this to see us come up with a county manager. So that we are, we are not.
I think we should hire somebody to to help Justin and.
That first, yes.
Before we ever even talk about a county commissioner or county manager.
Okay.
We have HR for a county manager or county. We have HR for this. We have department heads. We are liaisons. We aren't like, we aren't. There to do the jobs of our personnel.
Lori.
Thank you. I like Bryce's approach because as a eighteen year employee. I did not know that we had a different policy other than asking Lacy or collecting our applications. And running our own ads, et cetera. So, I mean, there's a breakdown in communication right there. I never would have taken all that extra work when I was alone the last year and a half if I knew I had, you know, a resource. So. It's been a great constructive, thank you all for opening these doors because it would take a huge load off of me. I mean, I went through three interview rounds and it was a lot to do by myself, compiling all of that data and collecting it, et cetera. I did not know that we had.
Well, in the last nine months since I was elected, I have realized that that. A a lot of things have not been taken to HR when they should have been. And so we need that policy. I mean, Karen's HR, so I mean, that's where it should be going.
You know, in some county, you do not want to get cheap, um, ask particular interview questions unless they've been signed off.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. I I was unaware, and I've been a department head prior and, you know, I am one now. You know, I've asked Lacy to gather my. Applications. I gathered them myself. I had no idea that we had a different avenue.
Yeah.
Justin, you still have anybody on there?
Uh, there's, there's a few people on there.
There's what?
There's a few people on there.
Any comments from people on Zoom? Hearing none, we're going to move into public input. Public comments and discussion. No action may be taken automatically under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included. On an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Since you're in here.
Since I'm in here.
Hello? Right here.
Right here.
Yeah, sure.
You can sit down.
The hot seat.
And you need to identify yourself, please.
Steve Evanson, local business owner, longtime resident. I guess twenty five years counts as longtime now, or am I still a tourist?
That's long.
Urinated, am I still a tourist?
Yeah, you're still.
I I watched your.
I know. That's true. I just want to say, and I've been meaning, I just happened to drop in because I had a court case today and I got done with it. I just happened to drop in. I appreciate you guys. Going public input, but I think the county and the city are missing some real opportunities to start. Looking in in terms of long term growth, what needs to happen in the community, where things need to go. I don't. I don't see a lot of alacrity within either the city officials and no offense intended to county officials. To really start having some planning about where we want to go as a community. I believe that there are some. Businesses that are looking at coming here. I believe that there are things that need to happen here. I think the biggest issue that we face as a community, in addition to. A a lack of certain things is the lack of a good grocery store. I am constantly amazed when I go to Tonopah and Yarrenton and Hawthorne. Regularly that that their grocery stores make ours.
Yeah.
Look like what it is. I think that there needs to be some serious action to try and get a developer and and somebody like that to move. In that direction, move that evil somehow. I think we need to look at what we want our downtown to be and our downtown to go. I know that there's a lot of discussion. And I'm not getting in the middle of whatever's going on with you all over the 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 place, that's what the windmill wants turned into. I think that's a really good idea. But once you get to that point, then then it becomes, what do you do with the rest? Where do we go with the rest? What what happens to the rest of downtown? And, you know, we had an awning project that we put awnings on all these buildings ten or fif- ten or twelve years ago, and now all the awnings are falling apart. Hanging there like they're falling apart. They look terrible. They need to be taken down. We just don't have a lot of sense of cleanup and a lot of sense of making the community look good, a lot of community pride, as I would call it, with regards to a lot of the. Building owners and and everything, even in town and and landlorders in town and everything else. I'm not talking about getting needs from the city. We have bare lots. We have weeds. I'm talking about, you know, the way the buildings, the way the awnings look, those kind of things. And there there's not a lot of upkeep. And we do have to some extent a downtown that is not as lively as it could be. And so. I think that you got there. I just don't see any sense of urgency. And I've always said that we're in this spiral. Where we don't have enough people to get enough businesses and we don't, we're not going to get any more businesses until we get enough people and they don't have enough places to live because there's not businesses here. And and nobody's saying, okay, we're going to stop this and do this, you know? I would really like to see a lot more urgency from county and elected officials. And where we come together and agree on this kind of stuff as to what needs to happen. And what 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 do we want to do with the downtown? How do we, there also has to be an understanding of how we get to where we are. How do we get to the point where where and how do we change some of the things that 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 aren't where they are? You know, we need another hotel in this town. I certainly think that a chain hotel. Looked very well. I certainly think that there's some places to do that. You know, there's been a lot of discussion. I'm going to say this publicly, and I know this probably is different for our. I mean, if we're looking at at effectiveness within within our government, there is, there is some. Questions need to be asked as to. What function our city government performs in light of, you know, communities like. Hawthorne and Tonopah not having city governments and and those kind of things. I don't know. The answers to all these things, but I think the phrase, if you keep doing what you've been doing, you're only going to have what you've got, comes to mind. I think we've been doing what we've been doing for so long that we're afraid to look for different answers and different solutions. And I'm not coming up here saying that nobody's acting in their, not acting in their best interest or in the town's best interest. I'm not saying that that's going on within the city. I just don't see a lot of urgency within the elected officials to get a lot of stuff done. I just see a lot of the same old, same old. And it's very frustrating and aggravating as to 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 look at property, to invest in property here and to come in. And to say, you know, to do this, that, and the other thing. So I just, I would like to see some sense of, hey, we're going to go out and pursue these businesses. We're going to go out and pursue these things. We're going to make it easy for people to come here and and do this kind of work. I think that the issue with the county jail and where it goes. I mean, you know, I've thought about a lot of things because I drive a lot, and when I'm driving, I'm thinking, you know, you look at. You know, you look at the current Safeway. Well, if the Safeway moved and that lot became available for a law enforcement center or jail, that could really work out. And then, you know, you 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 start, you start looking at, well, we have this locks of love thing and and all that going and stuff. Is there, is there a a plaza opportunity there on that corner where we can incite people to stop? And if development happens on the other side of the underpass, if another business comes in on the other side of the underpass. Or how do we get people to cross the moat? That's what I've called it since I moved here, which of course is the railroad tracks. Might as well be a moat with alligators and then a drop bridge in terms of tourists. But what are we going to do to get them to cross the moat? If they're pulling off and turning that, turning right or left to go east, how do we get them to go west, you know? Maybe it's something that says, go west, young person to Love Lock. I mean, I don't know, but something needs to happen to make sure that they're not just pulling off, they're getting back on. Does that involve music, moving the museum downtown? Does that involve, uh, and then what do you do with the Marsen House where it is? I mean, there's a lot of things that that can be looked at here that need to be looked at to say, we've got to get people to stop. You know, you have the only operating around courthouse in the United States. That is something that people would look at and be interested in. This is a beautiful room. You guys may hear about the history of things. Is there something that we can do with weekend tours or something like that that will get people to stop and come off the freeway, especially if you have a museum? You know, on the corner or in the old country equipment or something like that. There's so much more that can be done than what I think we're doing. We just need to get some new ideas and some. Some some urgency in the situation because we're really. And I firmly believe a lot of it starts with a grocery store and getting some developers in here to look at developments, property, doing that kind of stuff. So that's just my two cents for the day.
Very good.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I add? Um, I just attended the seventy sixth annual county fiscal options association conference in Virginia City. I've been at that conference in Virginia City twice. Persian County has not held that conference since nineteen fifty. I would love to have it here, but we're not prepared for that.
We don't have enough rooms.
Or activities. We had a small conference this year with everything, and we had over a hundred and thirty people, like. I would love to bring that back to Virginia.
Well, Naco would love to come here too, but we don't have the rooms and and it's been a long time since we've hosted Naco here.
I think we could host a hundred and thirty rooms, a hundred and thirty people. I think we could.
I I don't think rooms is the issue.
But but it becomes, everybody has to drive to the community center. Everybody has to, you know, there's.
It's not central.
There there's nothing central. And I mean. Nobody realized what a brain cramp it was to put the community center where it is, you know? I'm sorry, it was a brain cramp. They did it for cheap land, but it was not where it needed to be. When you drive into Battle Mountain, where's our community center? Right on Main Street. You know, there there's a, Hawthorne's community center is where, well, right on the main street.
And Winnebago's too.
Winnebago's too, right. And you want people to know that you have it and that it's available and it's available for use and everything else. You know, one business that I've always thought would be interesting with the locker left thing would be to have somebody, you know, one of the, a marriage chapel type business where that could be done. You know, there's a lot of things that we could do to market that and to and to get that kind of stuff going, but it's just not. It just seems, and and trust me, I've been to public meetings in this county where people have stood up and said, we like Love Lock just the way it is. We don't want it to change. So I know that there is some of that inertia out there too. Doesn't mean we have to change the whole community, just means we need to use what we have a little bit smarter and and use a little bit better. This is my only thing. And I think right now with the new jail being looked at, with a little bit of development going on, you know, we've seen what happened with the. Uh, you know, when I split up with Stacy and I, I lived over in that housing unit over there by a by Eagle Pitcher. He took that whole lot and turned it into houses and by all draw four. I mean, there are opportunities here for people who want to do those kind of things. And, uh, you know, I think we just need to get more urgent about it because I think. The growth is coming this way. I mean, Fallon, I heard, I've heard rumors of three thousand more jobs down there related to their naval base. They don't have a lot of places to live down there. We need to get a edit some of these curves and stuff on what's going on. So anyway, just just my two cents while I had a couple of minutes to come and show this on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, saying none, meeting adjourned.